Welcome to the special counseling meeting. We're down in the market. Recruit protocol.
Councilman Perry. Councilwoman Fasana. Councilman Figueroa. Councilwoman Fonseca. Councilman Ozzie. Councilwoman Rivera. Councilwoman Solano. We have four, Mr. President.
Please stand for the pleasure of the audience.
... United States of America. The Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
Next up.
It's a public hearing and situation of the fiscal year 2021. Who said about it?
I am at the public hearing. And the way to the speech. Hearing now, seeing now, public hearing is declared code.
Can I just ask this solicitor to cite the section that is more recent than this? Section two dash two oh eight at Central Falls Muni Code. Says a quorum shop consistent for effect of January six point fourteen. And it references a memo of May twelve point fifteen that changes the six to the four. I'm reading the ballot guide now. That was on the ballot in twenty twelve. My best guess, councilman, is that here is the question that was submitted to the electorate that resulted in this quorum change supposedly. Here's the question. Charlotte Central Falls women tried to DM it to provide the city council should have five members who are elected members or two allied members for a total of seven members. And because that question did not speak to the quorum, that it was decided by Muni Code that it didn't change at all. Okay. I'll forward this to you.
And can we just make the connection? Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for this list for our neck.
The next item is annual operating budget ordinance, general fund, first reading.
I understand we have a substitute A which is going to be thrown away. Chief of Staff.
Council President, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. There are two sub As. One is regarding the annual operating budget ordinance, general fund. It is essentially, basically, the Excel file with many different, many additional columns added from the set of the FY eighteen and FY proposed nineteen being the only two columns with the variance being the third. There are now the FY seventeen adopted budget, actual, ordered, FY seventeen ordered and actuals, the variance, the FY eighteen adopted budget, FY eighteen quarter three ending, FY nineteen proposed budget, and FY eighteen, FY nineteen variance, as had been requested by the council. The other one is an ordinance amending the FY nineteen salaries of department heads and others in unclassified service as a sub A. There were some, as you can see, the portions that were incorrect have been crossed out or added. And they are the items that we have been discussing as a council throughout the budget workshops, et cetera.
Is everyone understanding of that? Could he have called? What is he?
That's right.
I think you were fairly aware that there was a public hearing that spoke. So we actually had a public hearing considered ready and no one spoke on the item K. And we've got a substitute.
Okay, you got that. No, go down.
Could he have been, councilman? Josh, would you mind?
Yeah, absolutely.
Again, councilwoman Rivera and councilwoman Fonseca just tend to be changing.
Yes, so there are two sub As that we are looking to introduce. They are both sub As that we have been talking about throughout the workshops and the entire time. The first one is the annual operating budget ordinance, which is this one. The budget that we had introduced has FY eighteen and FY nineteen and the variance. And the council have requested more, more line items or more lines specifically for context. So we added FY seventeen adopted budget, FY seventeen ordered actuals, the variance between the two, FY eighteen adopted budget, FY eighteen quarter three ending, FY nineteen proposed budget, and FY eighteen versus FY nineteen variance. So that is the changes. And as you can see, all those items are underlined because those, when you, since we're introducing those new portions, they're underlined. But in terms of the body of it, none of those numbers have changed. The other one is fairly similar. We have the an ordinance amending the FY nineteen salaries of department heads and others, excuse me, and others in unclassified service, substitute A. There were some people missing, some people mislabeled. And so those are also underlined and those have been discussed during the workshop. So there's nothing new that's been presented. This is just cleaning up some of the original documents.
Thank you. What is your pleasure on the A? For a motion. Yeah, we have the substitute, yeah.
So we're gonna make a motion to accept this?
To substitute, correct. Substitute A that we just explained to us by the chief of staff.
We're gonna make a motion to accept this.
Correct. We have a motion by Councilman Solano, second by Councilman Figueroa, to insert substitute A. Any discussion?
I would like to ask about a sister city solicitor, criminal constitutor of that sort, and they say two hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Councilman Swan, we're on percale. We're on operating budget.
Yeah, there's two, yeah, they should have two in place. Yes, right. I seem like two pages. So on the spreadsheet, you have a question?
I have questions.
Go forward.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasana.
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rivera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Solano.
Yes.
Next item, I'm sorry. Same thing, we have substitute A as amended in.
We need to approve the ordinance as amended.
The annual operating.
The annual operating.
Look at the motion to approve as amended, the annual operating budget. And a motion by Councilwoman Rivera. Second by Councilman Castan and Councilman Solano. Any discussion? Given Councilwoman Fasana, go forward.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasana.
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca. Councilwoman Rivera. Councilwoman Solano.
Yes.
Question, Mr. President?
Thank you.
Next ordinance is an ordinance pertaining to salaries of department heads and others in unclassified service.
Here we have a motion to insert substitute A. Substitute A which had the salary. Department heads and others in unclassified service.
If you have, if you have questions from the school sent to us or from last year, when we asked. Do you have a mind? Some of this story. Like, there's one, this was sent May twenty-third, it said addition of year-to-date operating. It was a number twelve. So there not any difference? On operating. And that's the purpose?
Well, we just, we just approved as amended, the operating budget. Again, it's only first passage tonight. Let's hear it, substitute A.
Councilman Fasana.
Yes. We have a question, let's hear it. Motion by Councilwoman Rivera. Switch to A. Second by Councilwoman Fasana. Any discussion?
Councilman? I have a question, but it seems to be a personnel change. On the second page, we have now changed the redevelopment agency contractor to a special projects consultant. The salary item is, my item is the same. I was wondering if the chief of staff could speak to that.
Thank you, I'd be happy to speak on that. That is the role of Tom Della. Previously, he was considered the title of redevelopment agency as a contractor. Now he's been switched over and really, in reality, we're using him for special projects, the train station, the facade improvement program, those special projects that need someone, that need someone with experience to sort of focus on those projects. And it's more expansive than just the redevelopment agency work that he was doing. So the job description is in the packet that I sent you and that is the position of him.
Strictly just an age change?
It is strictly an age change.
Shall we?
Nothing to do with salaries, it was just that his work was more expansive than what it was originally titled as. And so.
So he's a salaried employee then?
He is a nonclassified salaried employee.
So does that position have to go out and then?
I, oh, um, what do you mean?
But do you have to go through the legislative hearing, in charge, do you have to go through the charge? How does that work?
No, he was currently employed with the city. So we changed, all we really did was change his job title. Right.
But he was a contract, he was an employee, he was a contractor.
Correct.
So he's like ten, whatever, a contractor, so is he still a contractor?
I do not believe he's a contractor, no. He is a salaried employee.
So his pay, gives all these payments to him on the capital improvement? He won't be getting any more pay?
He will not be receiving any more of those payments at all. Correct.
Any further discussion, councilman?
Sorry to make you move again. Mr. Staff. I'm looking at last year's budget and his position wasn't listed. So was it funded directly last year or through some other source?
If I'm not mistaken, he was funded through the redevelopment agency. And so since his job responsibilities were a little bit more expansive, you know, we wanted to have him focus on the facade improvement program, the train station, and the train station district, we decided that this would probably be a better fit.
Great, that's kind of related to councilwoman, the councilwoman's question. He is an at-home employee, not a contractor?
Yes, he is. Correct.
Anyone else? Go forward, substitute A.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasana.
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rivera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Solano.
Yes.
With that, looking for a motion to approve as amended, the ordinance pertaining to salaries of department heads and others in unclassified service. A motion by Councilwoman Fasana, second by Councilwoman Solano. Any discussion? Hearing Councilwoman Fasana, go forward.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasana.
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rivera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Solano.
Yes.
Next item is an ordinance amending the wage schedule generally, first reading.
You approve for a three? Motion by Councilwoman Figueroa and Councilwoman Solano, special on the motion. Councilman Fasana.
I have a question, pardon for the solicitor. There's a mention there about ships and the collective bargaining, are all collective bargaining? Do they close now, so is it set or will we, or will we be back on the table?
All three collective bargaining agreements run through 2022. There is no return unless of unexpected arbitration or.
Good, thank you. Councilman Figueroa, yes. Anyone else? Go forward.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasana.
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rivera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Solano.
Yes.
The capital program and capital budget ordinance, first reading.
Next question. Councilman Solano, approve. Second by Councilwoman Fasana, discussion?
Councilman? Just so the rest of the council knows, before some of you guys got here, I had a conversation with the chief of staff and with the city solicitor regarding some language in the charter about how the capital budget, sorry, capital program and capital budget ordinance should be detailed. Every project is actually supposed to be named with the amount. Josh did send us, or excuse me, the chief of staff did send us that information via email, but it should be part of the actual ordinance. And so next week, they're going to submit that documentation, probably as a sub A to the original. So we'll have more details about when the projects will be right on the ordinance. Very good. Thank you.
You mean this report only?
So it's not a report, it's actually, according to our charter, the actual.
Definition is like a.
So the budget is supposed to have the projects attached with the estimated cost. So like I mentioned, the chief of staff sent us that email after the second budget workshop. We're gonna rework that information, put it into this document. So that includes not just the total amount, but some of the part.
We have questions. Good question, this expenditure report, when is this?
Uh.
It's not the breakdown, it's the remaining breakdown. Does it look like this is some of the capital improvement stuff?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what the question is.
Yes, what is this?
I have some.
You said.
Oh, it's what I, you know, okay, I apologize. So this is, just a second. Four. I believe this is.
Something here, I just want to.
Give me just a second. Give me just a moment, I'll put my name on that sensor.
Post this right here.
Okay. Uh, this is. This was a breakdown of other professional services in the planning department.
So, so my question is, so this is separate from capital, correct?
Yes.
So in terms of like Tom Della, right?
Yes.
So I'm just looking at one thing right here. He was paying three thousand dollars independent contractor. So he was paid that in addition to everything that's in the capital unit, right?
No, Tom was not, Tom was paid out of other professional services. And that should have been the only.
Yeah, capital was like forty thousand.
Uh, I don't believe, I have.
No, he was.
I don't believe that that's accurate, but I have to, I don't have those numbers and figures right here in front of me. But I don't believe that to be the case. But as with every question that the council has, I'll be more than happy to take that back, have an answer to you within twenty-four hours.
Now, what I also had to ask before is what is, what can be deemed capital improvement? I don't know, maybe that's like a solicitor question, but I want to understand what can be considered capital improvement projects. Because before, when I asked for something for capital improvement, I'd been told that's not a capital improvement project. So I would like to know what specifically is. Is the La Casona dinner still on there?
I will get that definition and have it sent to the council.
And even for the descriptions, like sometimes it's in the other professional, but it's like cut off. So if it can be like merged, you know, you can merge the cells, not merge them, what they call it.
Yeah, like expand that so we can see what the full description is.
Yeah, something's going on.
So, so you're asking for that report with the description, just to include the full description, right?
Thank you.
Other professional services, okay?
And the capital improvement too. But that, I think you guys will do it here in the.
Yes.
In terms of the other, the other hundred thousand that we had talked about for the super union, I don't see it here in the breakdown of capital and planning for fiscal year nineteen. Can we figure out where the error comes from?
That has not finished yet, although it's coming down to crunch time and it will have to be determined within the next few, two weeks or so, because we're approaching the deadline. So I do know a decision has to be made. Councilman Fasana. Given that there's two weeks left, or three weeks, excuse me, left in the fiscal year, are we currently running a surplus? Reason why I ask that question is given by the councilwoman's question, may or could his discretion if we're running a surplus spend a hundred thousand dollars out of what we have left in our account? That is correct, and I cannot answer that, but I feel more from the bullet line as answering that question.
Oh, we'll also use that hundred thousand for the.
No, I just think in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, the mayor has the discretion to say.
And then, and also the million dollars for the train station. What's happening with that? We don't have to put in a million dollars?
Well, we do not have to put in one million. Are you talking about the three million dollars that seven hundred? So it was a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent split, Kentucky taking seventy-five percent, us taking twenty-five percent, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand. Our CDBG, most recent application that was presented to the council, includes funding to help cover those costs. And that money isn't due all right away, and so we can pay over a span of, you know, a few years, depending on, you know, what CDBG ends up giving us, doesn't give us, et cetera.
And in terms of the library, did we give them the funding?
From that.
Seven to ten business days.
Yes, I can confirm that if, if they haven't received it now, it would have been within the seven to ten business days. I can confirm that that was the process that we all agreed to. Got it?
I have a question on the bonds, but I don't know.
Oh, wait, wait. I'd be happy to try, depending on what the question is, I can, you know, attempt to answer it or mark it down and get it back.
I guess I'm just confused on this, the spreadsheet that was sent out. Outstanding as of last June, June thirtieth last year, one, uh, let me know. But this total is overwhelming. Well, the total says ten forty-three, is this as of now, I guess?
That is, those are the most current estimates that we have, yes.
Which one though?
So the top one just lists the bonds that we currently have, so there's five different bonds that the city has. The bottom is the schedule. Now, some of them fall off within that timeframe, but those are the breakdown to the five bonds that we have and the debt service that we have.
And this is saying, this is how much is the fiscal nineteen, that's how much?
We're currently paying, yep.
This is how much we're gonna pay each year?
Yes, that is, that is what we are to be paying each year, yes.
So I called this morning and I had a question related to this that might help us with something. So I assumed that after we finish fiscal year twenty, we would essentially have a million dollars extra in the budget because we've currently been paying two, around in the ballpark of two million dollars. What was explained to me was that all the school construction funds are paid for by the state. So if we look at our current budget now, on page. On page eight of the sub A that we just received, when we see the school housing aid direct payment, the money coming in is essentially part of what we're using to pay the bonds going out. And so we wouldn't get any money coming in because we wouldn't be owing any money on school bonds, and so.
Well, we would get a certain percent, a small percentage of that. Well, we would get a a certain percent, a small percentage of that because uh the reimbursement is 90, approximately 96%. And so that extra 4% or-ish that we've been contributing, that that part, correct? Right, so but out of the, like this year, it's looking like we're gonna have about 1.5 million dollars from the state coming for school housing aid. We won't have that 1.5 million once we're no longer paying school housing.
What do you mean you won't have?
So the state helps us pay for the school building.
You're saying that the, that aid's not coming in anymore?
Right, because we, we're gonna finish paying it off. Yep. But so like the disappearance of the bond payments for us doesn't mean a surplus of cash on deck, essentially. Because it's money that's coming from the state that we're just paying back to our creditor. Besides this 4% that Josh was talking about. Yep.
But we still have to pay back, like even if it's still 19, 19. So the total's 2.2 million. I mean, only get 1.3 million.
Yes, because some of those are not reimbursable. So the school construction ones, um were reimbursable and so we'll get that reimbursement until 2020, uh or until that that bond ends. And then the other ones are, were not reimbursable and they were just commitments that the city had made in the past over a span of time, so they, those remain without reimbursement.
So where in the budget does it show where we're paying, paying this off? So the rest, 2.2 minus the 1.3. Where in the budget does it show that what we're giving back or paying? From that end?
So the city debt service is page 14. This is the original book, it's uh page, uh, I'm watching page 18.
So, so I guess my question is, why are we allocating 2.264, which is more than our debt? If, why are we allocating more than we owe and we get 1.3 per year?
No, the, the, so those are, uh, you're saying, why are we allocating 2.264846? That's the total number. What we're paying is the uh I believe, I, I, it'd probably be better for Lance to answer this question, so I can take it down. I'll make sure he provides an answer to you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Voto Voto?
Councilman Ferrer?
Yes.
Councilman Castan?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rivera? Councilman Solano?
Yes.
I just couple of, uh, quick notes before we uh begin. Uh next Monday is a regular council meeting, 6:00 PM. Now Tuesday is the final passage of public hearing. Uh that will be held, I understand, at Calpitt School uh due to the
Calpitt, no.
Is it eldest? Okay, but it will not be here, I'll remind you on Monday, the Tuesday's budget process will not be here. It will be on the school.
Elder.
Elder, okay, due to the heavy volume of court cases or something, so just to know, but I'll remind you next week, so. Everybody have their packet for next week? Voto Voto, with that, just a quick motion. Motion by Councilwoman Rivera, we begin. Seconded by Councilman Figueroa and Councilman Solano, we stand adjourned at 6:30, thank you.